Can get settled in. It's a little bit after six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. It's called the Johnston City Council Work Session number, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. Twenty-four dash zero two to order. Sam, roll call, roll call, please.
Martin?
Here.
Kirkhart?
Here.
Pope?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
We have one agenda item this evening, and that is a discussion of the FY twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So Thursday night, we will be holding a work session with Council starting at five thirty. Since we didn't have anything scheduled for tonight's workshop, we decided, hey, we'll just take the opportunity to start doing some of the intro work. Our goal then would be, hopefully, we can keep it just to two work sessions versus having the third one we've already scheduled with Council. So really, what I'm going to do with the help of Teresa and Sarah, we're going to kind of go through some of the intro stuff. I'm going to jump around a little bit in the budget book. The first page should be the transmit letter, but I'm going to go to some other sections. So if you want to follow along, I'm going to go to under the Budget Overview, and I'm going to start in Metro Comparisons. Now, this was not here over the weekend, so this is a new section. But we talked a little bit with the H R Finance Committee about these comparisons. Kind of some context, I think, a little bit of.
Mike, where would we find that?
Again, so if you go under Budget Overview, there's going to be Metro Comparisons.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep. And so these are some tables the H R Finance Committee has seen previously. But this first table is the residential taxable property values compared to the commercial industrial tax taxable values. And this looks across the whole metro. And you can see Johnston is right here. So the blue is your residential property values, red is commercial industrial. Johnston itself, we were at seventy-two, yes, we were at seventy-two point two percent residential taxable value with the remainder thirty-two point eight in commercial industrial value. That compares to the metro at sixty-seven point two percent for the residential taxable value. So we do have a higher concentration of residential taxable value for the rest of the metro. So that would mean that we do push some of the tax burden compared to other of our metro peers on the residential taxpayer. This next chart depicts the taxable value compared to the TIF diverted taxable value. So anytime we have a tax increment financing district or an urban renewal district, and we then are funding projects through TIF, we divert some of the property values to the TIF district. And this shows then a comparison of the metro communities and the amount in blue that's not diverted and in the amounts in red that are diverted. Johnston, we diverted eighty-three point oh percent. Now, that compares to the overall metro where they diverted, and the average metro is eighty-five point seven. So we do have a higher concentration of property tax value diversion in Johnson compared to our peers. Again, then that then relates to kind of the operational dollars, because what's being diverted is really your operational dollars. Your debt service is not diverted, so those dollars keep funding debt service. This next chart is Johnston-specific, but it does show over the last ten years the amount of taxable valuation and then a TIF diversion. And so you can see then in FY twenty sixteen, we diverted ninety point three, or we received ninety point three percent. So less than ten percent were diverted compared to this current fiscal year. We'll have eighty-three percent that's not being diverted and seventeen percent will be diverted. So we steadily have seen growth in the amount of property values that are being diverted to TIF. This next couple charts really look at per capita. The first two are operational revenues, and the last chart is expenditures. But this shows the per capita expenditures in the metro, and you can see we're at five.
Mike, can I interrupt you just real quick? This, the previous chart, the historical use of TIF in Johnston.
Correct.
So the number, like, so the three eighty-eight there in red.
Yep.
What is that?
That's in millions. So we're diverting three hundred and eighty-eight million dollars of property value to TIF.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Good question. Sorry.
No, you're fine. I was slow.
Any other questions on these charts? So moving along, then, our per capita revenues for just our general fund and our operational levies. This would not be any of our special revenue levies. We are receiving five hundred and seventy-eight dollars in operational dollars. That compares to six hundred and twenty-eight dollars within the metro. So we're a little bit lower on the end for operational levies. Then when you bring in your special revenue levy, levies or revenue, Johnston is at one thousand two hundred and ten dollars, and the average is fourteen hundred and one dollars. So again, we're on the lower end when you then include revenue levies.
What would be examples of that? Debt levy or what's your?
Debt levy separate. So this would be your general fund emergency levy. Then your special levies for us would be employee benefit levy. Would also include your tort liability levy, which we currently don't levy for. But other cities, some other cities do.
So how do we get from five hundred and seventy-seven to twelve hundred dollars, just by adding the special levies?
I guess in the budget forms, that would also include, what other special revenue levies would that include? And I put the table together, so now I'm looking at Teresa to answer my question.
It seems odd that it would double.
On the state budget form, what would be the other levies of that? I, what, it's sort of pausing. But it wouldn't be that big of a jump. It would, it would probably be your other. I'll write the question down, and we'll get you an answer.
That'd be great. Great, thanks. Right. And so I guess my question is, since we're not using very much of it, how can it go from five hundred and seventy-seven, seventy-eight dollars that when you add in the special levies to twelve-ten, that doubles it? That doesn't seem, something seems off with that.
No, I agree with you. We'll get some clarification.
Perfect. Thanks.
Then when you're looking at just the per cap expenditures for general fund and operational levy on expenditure side, you know, Johnston sits at nine hundred and five dollars. The metro average is one thousand eighteen dollars. So, you know, we, we operate very lean, is what that says to me. Projected general fund ending balances, so all the state budget forms include cities do report what their projected ending balances were or will be at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And there is a little bit of a spectrum, everyone from ninety-two point four percent with the city of Grimes. And, and they know that. And I know they've been trying to look that ending balance down, down to the Des Moines, city of Des Moines, which was twenty-eight point four percent. Now, our policy's been twenty-five percent, and what we reported to the Department of Management with our budget accrual was we were going to have an ending balance of thirty-three point eight percent. Now, part of that was our budget amendment number one was not processed prior to us certifying our levy rate. If that would have been reversed in order, so if our fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget amendment would have been filed prior to us certifying our actual FY twenty-four property tax rate, you would have seen twenty-five percent. But I'm showing you, I'm not trying to mark up anything, but that's, that's the reason for the difference. Now, the average, if you look at just the city of, or all metro communities, the average reserve was forty-six percent. If you exclude Grimes and Ankeny out of those, it'd be thirty-eight point two percent. So, you know, our reserves are a little bit lower than the average. So this is just some comparisons, and I think trying to use, kind of set the stage of maybe some of the issues that we have, and I think at least from what you hear from staff on, you know, the leanness of our operation, which is, I think, something that we're proud of, but it does, it can be a stressor at times for staff. And also kind of maybe set some of the expectation on, on some of the challenges we have going into this fiscal year. Any questions on those comparisons? And certainly, if there's any other data you want, we can certainly put some of that together for you. So I'm now going to go under your Budget Overview. I'm going to jump into the first tab of the Executive Overview. And this is really just some high-level points that as we put together the FY twenty-five budget, some of the challenges we had. First, on the projected property tax revenue, if we would have kept and maintained the levy rate at ten eight five five one three, we would receive six hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and six dollars and more in additional general fund and special levy revenue. The debt service, we would receive three hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars in additional funds. For the egg, we'd actually seen a slight decrease of just over a thousand dollars. So in all, all the different revenue sources, we would have received just under a million dollars, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Now, as you look at the impacts, these are really kind of the first set are just really status quo, keep the lights on. What are we contractually required to fund? One being Polk County Dispatch, that was an additional one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that started in, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Our general liability and tort insurance, we're projecting will go up three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars next year, and that's an operational cost. Wage increases per union contracts, our police is two hundred and fifteen thousand. The firefighter, just our Johnston, hundred and three thousand, a hundred and three thousand dollars. The Ask Me for Public Works and Parks is forty-six thousand dollars. We also, in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, had revenues that the council said, let's move those out of lost. Some expenses out of lost were general operational expenses. For twenty twenty-five, we want those removed, so that's five hundred from loss to the general fund itself. And then the Ignite user fee, if they would open January one of twenty twenty-five, we'd have five months. We would figure February through June. That would be an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in all, that's one point five three two million dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-five that were not in fiscal year.
And all of these expenses are forecast to be your, you know, they're not going to go down, go away after a year. They're going to continue, if not go higher. Okay?
Correct. They're, they're going to be ongoing expenses.
Yeah.
Not one year, one-time costs. I know, like, for example, Polk County, if you read some of the language they have in their contract, they're projecting that that could go up ten percent every year for the next decade. And now I think there'll be some pushback by us and others, but that, that, that's a big increase. And, you know, long-term continually large increases.
That's on the radio system?
Yes, that's on the dispatching system.
Just as a point of clarification, though, Mike, the five hundred thousand dollars moving expenses out of lost, that would be one time.
Well, there was five hundred thousand dollars in lost that were ongoing expenses.
Right. So we're moving that out of lost.
Into the operational, but if.
It'll be ongoing in, in the operational fund.
It's an ongoing in the operational.
Because it was based on salary, right? It wasn't a police officer or two, or things like that?
Correct. It was, it was wages. We also, this budget, now your staffing plan that the council reviewed and received this fall had nine new positions in it. This budget is only including five of those new positions being recommended. So it's not even, we're not even including a full staffing plan in the fiscal twenty-five budget. But includes two police officers, a mechanic position, an assistant city administrator position, and a recreation coordinator. Assistant city administrator position, if you recall, we're splitting that position. The finance director would also be an additional position. But then we're also eliminating the assistant city administrator slash finance, finance director position. So there's only taking one to two positions there. So those positions are also adding additional five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So on all, just kind of those ongoing expenses and new expenses, I mean, you're talking almost two million dollars. And if we recall, just on the operational side, we're, we're increasing six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in additional revenue without changing the property tax level.
What's the total benefit cuts, negative thirty-five percent? What is that?
No, it's approximate thirty-five percent. It's a little.
Oh, you're going to have to make this a lot bigger, my friend.
I can't control that. It's a software thing, but.
Wow. Okay, yeah, now I look, okay, now it's.
It would be nice if we could have a negative number.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. So what benefit cuts?
What?
What does that mean? Total, the total benefits, I would understand.
Oh, sorry. I should, I'll delete the word cuts. That was an earlier.
We're not reducing benefits.
Sorry.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's an additional thirty-five percent.
The benefits, so basically, the, the wages are three hundred and eighty-four thousand, but the costs of the benefits are.
Sorry, I copied this out of another table.
You're fine, you're fine.
We were cutting positions, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Mike, is that recreation coordinator, is that the full year, or is that prorated?
That's prorated for six months.
Okay.
So that would actually, that, that's the only prorated position, because again, we don't expect Ignite to, to be done till January next year. So a year from now, and so that's why that's a half-year position. Now, if you remember in the staffing plan, and we're having internal discussions, and we're going to be engaging Chad and Brian from Ignite on this. But a lot of their contract language requires them, and it's all right to provide all the staff within their facility, and some of our fees are supposed to go towards that staff. And it convoluted contract and just some of the language, so we talked through, and there's really a good. But I think with that, we're not going to add part-time staff, at least right now in year one. And maybe something we want to look at down the road, but we're just going to need one position to really do the programming and, and figure out what services we want to offer in the Ignite facility at the time that we're being allocated.
Mike, what, if we had been able to carry out the entire staffing plan, what would that dollar amount, what, what would that have been?
For, for what, again?
For the, for the next fiscal year, if you had done the entire staffing plan for one year, as opposed to this reduced set, just out of curiosity?
I have in here. If, we'll, we'll jump into some looking ahead here in a little bit.
That's fine.
But the positions that are not being proposed, and if we do them next year, that would add an additional three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And just the different, what, the police officer's step one, step three, can you explain what that?
Again, it'd be an entry-level position versus a lateral transfer.
Okay, so if somebody would be transferring in from another community, or?
They would be, they would start at a higher step.
Okay, so we're sort of anticipating the possibility. Okay, that's, that's helpful to understand that. Thank you.
The next section of this page really talks about, these are asks that departments made that are included in the budget right now. Remember, we're not, we had proposed not to do decision packages this year. And then we present a budget for you, for the council to consider, but we certainly have identified those kind of new items. Compared to last year, the number of decision packages, if that's what you want to call them, is substantially. Actually, very few that are impactful to the general fund itself. So you look in the police department, they're adding one new patrol car we're proposing to spend, to fund that out of lost. The new implementation of the automated license plate reader program for year one, there's some grant funding and some lost funding that we're proposing. That would be an ongoing expense in year two and going on, but that's forty-five thousand. Implementing the youth diversion program, it's a program that they would like to implement, that's four thousand, at least in year one. And then replacing the CSI camera for digital forensics, that's a one-time cost. It's a piece of equipment for seven thousand five hundred. Fire District, the first three.
Mike?
Ongoing.
Mike, quick question.
Yes.
What is that, my, implement youth diversion program? The one in police department?
Say that again.
What is this, what is that?
The Implement Youth Diversion Program?
Yeah.
You know, the police chief will talk about it on Thursday.
Okay.
But it's, but in a nutshell, I'll let the chief give you a ten-second update.
Essentially, it's, it's an alternative to referring juveniles to the juvenile court services process and handling it internally first.
But there'll be more information tomorrow when the police department gives their budget update. Fire District, the first three items on their list are really ongoing expenses. Yes, they're all coming out of general fund, but, but these are really just keep the lights on. And then there's a station alerting software that they would propose to pay for out of lost. And that's the system, if you're ever in the fire department and you hear a call come in, it's that kind of robo-call that they, that gets announced. It's, it's that system replacing it, modernizing it. Under Animal Control, it's a startup for the T N R program that there's been a lot of discussions on related to feral cats. That would be an ongoing general fund cost. Public Works, they have three items that are really all out of road use tax. There's a one pickup with a snowplow, brine trailer, mechanical gate for easier efficiencies for their staff. And then under Parks and Rec, there is part-time seasonal staff that's proposed. That's twenty thousand dollars. That's actually being paid for by the town center. So we actually get fifty thousand dollars in revenue. That'll be some material expenses we'll have out of that, but, but it'll be a cost neutral to the budget itself. And then the Ignite user agreement, which I noted earlier. So overall, the departments really did have status quo. There was items that we've already, departments proposed that at the staff level, we re-removed just to get a budget we felt that could get support by council. So that kind of frames this fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Brian helped us segue to kind of looking ahead, because I think I was asking, what are the challenges? This budget, as you may already know, has a nearly sixty cent increase. One of the questions was, will we do a levy rate increase of that this year? Will that prevent us from needing a large levy rate increase the following year? And I think some of the areas that I would highlight, you know, expenses will continue to see increases with the Ask Me teenager and firefighter contracts. Now, you've noticed I've not talked about non-bargaining. But I'm telling you, contractually obligations we have to do. I'm going to tell you, your non-bargaining staff will want some type of increase, and there is an increase in here for them. The staffing plan, as Brian alluded to, you know, if we do the additional positions that weren't funded this year, you know, that would be a cost of three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. For staffing plan in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, that included two firefight, or two police officers, three firefighters. Engineering project manager were all proposed in fiscal year twenty twenty-six as adds. That's an additional six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And then the Ignite user agreement, the total one-year cost of that's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that's going to add an additional two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So that's, in, in total, all those is an additional one point five for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. You know, if you assume that revenues stay fairly flat, any increases in property taxes and the rollback, you know, next year's not a revaluation year, but we would expect in that the rollback would actually increase a little bit.
Mike, can I just, this page that you have up on your screen, I'm not finding that online.
If you go under the Budget Overview tab, and there's all the way towards the bottom is looking ahead to fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. And we're, we're towards the bottom of that page now.
Yeah, okay.
You know, so you could expect for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, revenues to, to be fairly close to what they are this year. So again, if the levy rate would remain the same, that would generate another six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. I do think there'll be additional ratcheting next year because of the new House File seven eighteen. So that will be impactful. I know some P F M projections where this year, they were projecting we would be in the middle tier. And we were in the middle tier. We were actually very, they were pretty much money spot-on. Next year, they're projecting that we'll be in, in the tier three, which means a three percent ratchet versus a two percent ratchet, ratchet this year. But the overall value increase is, is pretty about one percent more. So we're, we're going to really net out about the same. And then, so, so that will be an impact that we'll have to see how that plays out when we get the final property tax value numbers in late December of twenty, of this year, early January of twenty twenty-six. Now, one thing I would note, in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, the city would have the option to increase franchise fee. We're doing one percent now. Each additional percent will generate, based on information from Mid-American Engineering, about three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars a year.
Mike, in this last section, it says the additional ratcheting, and then you have an acronym there.
That is the, I forget what the A is, but it's the City General Fund Levy. So it's the term out of the legislation. What?
If you wouldn't mind it, just spell it.
We, we can fix the acronym.
No big deal, but just kind of.
So that's, that's kind of looking, trying to do some forecasting into the future and some of the challenges even next year that we'll, we'll face. So I'm going to jump up now. To go through this whole page, as we did talk about that. So I'm going to go to the, under Budget Overview, the property values and the levy rates. So, you know, we have seen good property value increases historically this year. And was a good overall increase in property values. This first table shows historically what your property value increases have been in basically billions of dollars. The percentage number above is the rollback number that we have seen each year. And then the blue is actually your taxable value. So you can really see how, especially this year, while values increased overall, really what that rollback did, it really limits that increase in the taxable valuation of your residential property value. So it is, it was very impactful to us. While people seeing a big increase in their home values, they're not seeing a big increase in their, their tax bill in the end of day, if, if property tax rates would remain flat. Commercial property tax backfill is, is council knows, the backfill, you know, after they made the big change and lowered the, added a rollback for commercial property taxes. Backfill that historically, that's now being phased out. So we'll be in the year phased out, and we'll be phasing out in twenty twenty-seven.
So that's like, when you put together all your revenue impacts, this is another one of a hundred thousand that frankly probably should go on that list, too.
Absolutely. Your multi-residential rollback, that was actually eliminated last year, and it was matched the residential. So we don't have any cliff, but, you know, interestingly enough, as you go through, and I've spent a lot of time trying to figure out that why question this year as I put the budget together, you know, how are we in our situation? Historically, we didn't have a lot of multi-residential tax properties. They must have been, like, put in condominium association, so they got the residential rate already. But interesting enough, we've been adding a lot of, of multi-residential. And, and as we did, and then it starts getting phased out and rolled off. So it is, again, it's one of those impacts and narratives that we have. And then you have the whole property tax reform. I'm not going to go through all this, but I think this is a, try to put together a pretty short summary. But I think the, the real takeaway I would say is clearly the legislature is concerned about property taxes. You know, this pass, this passed nearly unanimously. The House approved it ninety-four to one, the Senate approved it forty-nine to zero. So this had bipartisan support of the legislature. So I think it's something we do need to be conscious about as we put together property taxes here at the city of Johnston. Now, one thing I would say is, you know, lost and, and property tax relief. You know, historically, we have always used property tax relief as a contribution towards our debt service levy. Our levy, or our proposed ballot language, what was approved by the residents is in here, that at least fifty percent be allocated towards property tax relief, and the remainder of the revenue be applied directly to public safety expenditures, public infrastructure, public parks, sports and recreation facilities, and trails, and public library uses. So that was our ballot referendum language. Historically, you know, you've seen our debt service levy go from three dollars and fifty-nine cents, almost three dollars and sixty cents, prior to this, down to two thirty-four in fiscal year twenty twenty-one after that was approved. And we, we transferred that year seventy-nine point seven one percent of our lost revenue. And we, we transferred that year 79.71% of our lost revenue towards debt service. So we have always by far exceeded what we. Under the referendum, uh, for fiscal year 2024, we transferred $2.5 million, uh, to debt service and 1 million towards general operations. Uh, and even the general operational levy, I would say that's still property tax relief. But 91% went towards those and and what I would say is property tax relief, at least from staff's view. Um, of the $1 million, 358,000 went towards ongoing expenses and 702,000 went towards one-time expenditures. Now, for the proposed budget that's before the council and we'll, we'll talk through, uh, there's a total transfer out of lost of, uh, $4 million, which representing 87.87% of our projected loss revenues. Of which we are proposing, and this is, there's a reduction from this last year, uh, 2.142 million to go towards debt service and remaining 1. $811 to go towards general operations. Now, under, um, the proposed budget, you know, we're proposing a levy rate of 1145790. Um, if the council would elect to take that entire $4 million and we're not gonna put towards any towards operational. Because debt service, uh, you don't have a TIF diversion. Dollar for dollar, we get more benefit on the levy rate by putting some in operational versus in the debt service. But if you said, no, Mike, you need to come with a budget that you put it all towards debt service and not towards operational. That one decision would actually raise the levy rate an additional 20 cents. Uh, so we think that the proposed budget really is, uh, doing exactly what the, the referendum said. We're still doing over 50% towards, uh, the debt service, which I think was our narrative as we presented this to public. We're also providing additional debt service relief or excuse me, property tax relief by putting some towards operational. So we're capturing some of that TIF and preventing some of that TIF diversion from happening and we're, we're actually lowering the rate almost. I know that's a little bit novel idea, but certainly would pause if you want to have any discussion on that.
I, I would just say to the rest of the council that, um. We, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago and. I don't understand the whole of it, except that, uh, the way Mike explained it, just like he just said here. In this manner, we're still fulfilling what we said when we presented this lost, um, opportunity to the residents. But it's a way for us to gain a few more dollars out of it in, in like he said. So it's complicated. I don't quite get all of it, but I trust him. And, um, he's explained it the same way a couple of times, so it rings true.
And I, I have a better understanding of it now that I see it written out. Um, but one of the things that as we were talking about it at HR finance, uh, was that we heard Teresa say that she agreed with this. With, 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 with the concept here that, that, that what is being proposed is in fact is what's gonna happen. That we actually get more benefit from diverting some of those dollars to the operating side, um, from those lost dollars that we're spending.
Right, and this kind of goes against our philosophy in prior. In that we were trying to pin those lost dollars specifically to certain projects or purchases.
So it's.
Debt service, yeah. But it's, it still works.
Yeah, I, I, I think, and I, I agree. I think the only question I would have is just from a number standpoint. So in the third paragraph or the bottom paragraph, it talks about of which 2.1 million would go towards debt service. So you take the debt, you put the debt service in a dollar number. And then the paragraph above it, you, you, it's in a property tax number. It's, so you, the debt service levy was from the $3.59 down to $2.34. I, I would just sort of like to see when it was, when it was the, for last year. How much, what was the actual dollar amount that was applied to debt service?
Um, so, so for fiscal year 2024.
Yeah.
Um, we applied to debt service, 2,574,284 dollars. So the first sentence of the last paragraph.
Oh, okay, okay. So you're going from the 2.5 million to the 2.1 million. That's what.
So, so last year we, we did both 2.5 essentially to debt service and then another million to operation.
Right, right, right.
Uh, we're proposing to go to a total of $4 million, um, and split 2.1 to debt service and 1.8.
Yeah, I was just trying to, I was trying to, when you, I was just trying to get a comparison of whether 2.1 and that, you've explained it, so that's helpful. And I, I think it makes sense, so.
And again, it, 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 it's, you know, you have to remember when you're doing debt service. Everyone pays that levy and it doesn't get diverted through TIF. Operational side, there's that diversion to TIF. And so when you apply it to debt service, dollar for dollar, it goes, doesn't go as far. When you apply it to operational, dollar for dollar, it goes further. And so that, you're able to get that levy rate to come down by just moving the same dollars from one bucket to a different bucket.
And Mike, I, I wanna ask just the, the simpleton question here. The 4 million approximate dollars that you're proposing or that 87.87%. By your interpretation, all of that is considered property tax relief.
I, I would argue it is. I mean, if, if the count, I would argue any dollar we receive from lost is truly property tax relief. Now, not every individual will probably agree with that and that's okay. But if the council makes a decision, we're going to do an initiative. You gotta pay for it somehow. You're gonna pay for it through lost, or you're gonna pay through a property tax. When you use lost, that's property tax relief.
Thank you. And I, I think that's a logical, rational res- uh, explanation too, so.
So. Personnel changes, this, um. High level, I'll let you kind of read through this, but the classification compensation study will be working. I believe in February, we'll be presenting that to the HR finance committee. Correct? And then March will present it to council.
Are we still, I'm sorry, are we still in, where are we now?
I'm sorry, good question, cause I keep jumping around. So, uh, the budget overview tab, I'm on under personnel changes.
Thank you.
Um. So we'll be, we'll be presenting that. Our plan would still be to implement, uh, the classification compensation, uh, yet this year. Um, in the budget, we do have that this will pay, uh, to bring everyone up to market. There's a couple of positions, uh, that, uh, are still in their probationary period. We probably would not move those to market till they're through probationary period, uh, but it affects two individuals. Um, and then may need to be some, um. Because there's a potential compression issue between a person that's been here for a long time, that's gonna be brought up to market and a individual that is new to the position. There's probably gonna have to be some transitional planning, but we'll work through all that with the HR finance. Plan that's ultimately brought to council, but the, the good news, what I would say, just high level, and I'll let you read all this in detail. Uh, the dollars that was set aside in fiscal year 2023 budget, or excuse me, 2024 budget. Is sufficient to implement it, uh, for, uh, the rest of the fiscal year. So we're not gonna need any additional dollars to implement the plans. We're, we're satisfied. Now we're bringing it into and implementing pretty much in the last quarter of the fiscal year. Um, but, but that's the good news. We, I think what I would say the takeaway is, we, we weren't as far off market as maybe we thought we were. Um, proposed wage increases, what's proposed in the budget for ask me. Um, again, uh, 3% plus steps that average about 3.5%. Teamsters is 6% plus steps of 4%. Um, and the firefighters group, uh, 6% plus steps of about 4%. The non-bargaining part-time library is 4% and all others, what's in the budget, uh, for non-bargaining is 2.9%. Um, plus merit increases up to an additional 4%. Um, now there's certainly some may cap out if they're at top, so they wouldn't get 4%. Uh, but again, some of that will come through and how that all will get implemented, uh, through the class and compensation study. 2.9%, one of the matrix we're gonna recommend is we follow, uh, the CPUI Midwest index. Uh, so every year we would make an adjustment, um, and that would be 2.9% for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, staffing cha- changes, again, uh, what's proposed, um, in this budget would be to eliminate the current assistant city administrator finance director position. Add an assistant city administrator position, add a finance director position, so probably splitting, uh, the roles of the current assistant city administrator finance director into two positions. Uh, that's how good she was. Um, reclassify the lieutenants to captains in the police department. Add two police officers, add the mechanic, and then the rec coordinator. Again, that's a 50% uh, due to, um. Uh, the projected opening of the Ignite's facility. Uh, we did not include a city clerk position, uh, three firefighter positions and the part-time of staff, a rec staff. Now, we talked about it as leadership team, uh, leadership is on board with this proposal. Um, that we have for staffing and delaying positions going forward. Um, health insurance, there's some narrative and I'll let you read through it, but bottom line, you know, we're anticipating a 10% increase. And so that's included in the budget for next year.
Is there any in significant increases to staff in terms of deductible copays?
So we haven't received our final, um, information from Wellmark at this point. We're, you know, we are budgeting a 10% increase, uh, but we're, we're not anticipating there would be a big plan design change. Now, certainly if we get a shock increase and it's a 30% increase, you know, we're gonna have to have some discussions on how we implement that. Uh, and how we go forward. Uh, hopefully, you know, it'll come in less than 10%. But right now, there's no proposal. Uh, the, the cost participation by staff, there's no, no change in that either proposed.
Okay.
Since we're on the topic of insurance, if you go back to the very first item you hit on, which was increase, cost increases. One of the largest ones was our tort insurance. Um, any thoughts there of what's, um. Is that a policy we need to consider making changes to? I mean, that's a, I mean, it's, it's, I, I really appreciate you setting it all out in the sense that, I mean. If you look at the, I don't have the numbers right back in front of me, but I'll, I'll basically, the wage increases for our police and fire department are exceeded by. Our tort insurance payment, which is kind of, I mean, I don't, I'm not aware of significant lawsuit challenges. I mean, I guess, I guess we've had some, but I mean, but it's, it's a little, it's frustrating. And so I, I hope that we kind of consider whatever options we have to, to figure out how to get that, um, dealt with.
Okay, so a couple of comments. I would say what I'm hearing is it's pretty much industry what's happening. So you have, uh, the catastrophic losses from the deep ratio that's had a big impact. Um, there is within the marketplace, some very large settlements and lawsuit settlements or, or court awards that's happened. So again, that's affecting the reinsurance market, which then trickles down to us ultimately. ICAP, I'm being told they're seeing large, you know, we're talking 20, 30% in. Uh, so, you know, it's not just our carrier through EMC that's see, we're seeing this big of an increase. Uh, so with that said, you know, it's prudent for us. It's been a number of years since we've been out to the marketplace and, and have asked for quotes. We are currently doing that. I believe at least three companies we expect to, uh, provide us quotes on that. Uh, so it's something we are doing our due diligence to try to understand, are we being served right? Um, and then we'll have discussions with council. We're gonna come in and make a recommendation to make a change. Uh, there's certainly, uh, considerations the council wanna make related to that because changing carriers opens up some liability risks that, you know. We'll have to understand what those are and make that conscious.
But I think, we used to sort of think that every $15,000 or so is a penny increase in the levy, roughly. I don't know if that's still true or not, but. So the $390,000 is 25 cents. And that's hard to. That's frustrating.
And, and, and.
Cause it's not, we're not, nobody's getting anything more in the city because of that, right? It's not like we're not, we're not extending a service or keeping the library open or, or it's, 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 it's a real frustration, so.
And then we're buying a product and we're getting less.
Right, right.
So our, um, deductibles, I believe, were 5,000 for per event. Was that correct?
Uh, depends on what we're talking about, but for cars.
Like a hailstorm.
Um, yeah, I'm not sure on that one. It went, it did change. We used to have per event, now it's per building. Yeah, and it's, and it's not like, oh, it hailed, so here's our $10,000 deductible. Oh, it hailed at city hall, it hailed at public works, it hailed at public safety. So, if I can just kind of jump in a little bit too, this is not a Johnston-driven change. This is a market.
Right, right, right.
And when you look at our work comp experience modification numbers and those kind of things, we do a good job. But we can't control what the insurers are doing. There have been a number that have left the marketplace. Everyone's kind of reeling there. We hear 50% increases for some cities, so.
Yeah, and so, so I wanna make sure that frustration is not directed to anybody in this room. It's, that's the hard part, right? Is that, we, we're doing everything we can and you guys are doing everything you can to manage well and, and, and to, to be things as tight as possible. And then you have these things that are completely outside of our control that kind of come in and, and, but will it still have to be explained to the citizens why that's happening, so.
Mike, did I hear you indicate that there are municipalities that actually have a tort levy?
Yes, uh, and we have that ability to do a, a tort liability levy. We have not done that here. Uh, we've always been able to fund it out of other areas like our general fund in general. Uh, until we get to the point that, you know, we can't sustain it within our general fund. We'll keep funding it out of our general fund or other areas of, of our financial budget. But yeah, there, there are cities, uh, and, and I think, you know, I think the good news is the Johnston itself is in a position where, you know, we have a lot of. Uh, abilities to move and shift. Those cities that had the 810, the emergency, the library, the civic center, the band levy, and they were levying. I heard one city the other day, I think it was like $8.60 between all those. And they're gonna get pushed under this new house file down to 810. On top of that, they maxed out their employee benefit. They were maxing out their tort liability. There's no room for them, you know, they're gonna have to cut services or figure out how to add a franchise fee. Um, I was talking to one city and they said, you know, they called mid-am and said, hey, we wanna do a new franchise agreement. And they were basically saying, well, it's a year from now, because that many cities are now asking. So that's, that's the challenge that this new house file is really, you know, placing on cities.
Uh, uh, this is purely supposition, but, but I, I do wonder if, uh, some of those increases are in fact because some municipalities even. Have that specific, uh, levy capability there.
I, I think it's a marketplace thing. Again, I mean. Construction costs going through the roof. So tornado comes, takes a building out, it costs more to reconstruct that. Uh, a fire ladder truck was a million, now it's two. Um, and so we're just seeing more and more costs. And again, that fire truck gets hit, they're not gonna pay out a million, they're not gonna pay out 2 million.
And so when you say marketplace, it's not just municipal, it's not just a public sector, it's public and private sector.
Yes, yeah, exactly. I mean, how many, how many people's homeowners insurance went up this year? And it was way more than what you ever expected it to be all up. Uh, most people didn't have claims, but it's still, that's what the marketplace is doing on insurance.
Are, are there any of our metro peers that have a, uh, tort and liability levy? Can, can you at least, you don't have to know.
We can look it up and get it to you.
Thank you.
I think the thing that's important to note is that, that house file 718 made. Your strategic decision of when you take your tort, when you fund it out of the general fund and when you fund it out of a tort levy. You have to be much more strategically thoughtful about doing it and once you kind of do it. So I think there is, there, I think the way we've been doing it, there's some real strategic advantages to doing that. So I would just say that.
Um, let me see, 10 more minutes, so I'm just going to try to. Um, I'm not gonna go through any of this, but I would just point out background. This is historic background that's always been provided to councils. You'll see in here, community survey, residential, commercial growth. Bookworms and sales tax and how we've used it. There's a chart, uh, water sewer, uh, storm sewer rates, solid waste, recycling rates. Um, so there's some background information for the council's benefit. Um, and now I'll jump to the. Um, so there's some background information from the council's benefit. Um, and now I'll jump to the transmittal letter. Um, and again, this is just high level information, but the, the overall budget, um, overall, all expenses. You know, everything from debt service to operational. FY 2024, our original adopted budget was 78 million, 78.5 million. Proposed fiscal year 2025 is 83.7 million, so it is a change increase of about $5 million. Some of the, the big costs, again, capital projects are increasing 1.9 million. Salaries from wages across entire organizations, a little over 2 million. Dispatching fees, as we discussed earlier, from Polk County, 125,000, increased insurance cost 300. Are seeing, uh, financial increases. You were locked in in certain cases, multi-year contracts, as those are resetting. You know, we're seeing increases that are now getting passed that maybe through some of this inflationary period, we, we were able to weather out of. We're, we're now seeing it. Additionally, you know, the new positions that are included in the budget, that's expenses of $520,000. Now, the general fund, which is our main operating budget, so our revenues in FY 2024 were 21 million, expenses of, of 21.5 million. Uh, so we had a deficit of $505,000. For fiscal year 2025, our revenues are projected to be 22.1 million, our expenditures of 23.8. Uh, so we'll have a deficit of $1.6 million. With that said, even though it does look like a, a large deficit. Are planning that overall, our general fund balance will end at 6.6 million or 28%. That does compare to our ending balance of fiscal year 2025 of 35%. And, and we need that ongoing balance just to fund the operations. Again, we don't receive our first property tax payment till October, the end of October. And we have to start funding the operation July 1st. So we do need a reserve to get us through that. Property tax collections, if, if approved as presented, FY 2024 was 17.8 million. FY 2025 is 19.9 million or a change of 2 million or 2.1 million or 11.9% increase. Um, I would point out, and where did I? I thought I put it here, but. It is not there. Our property tax notice that will get published, and I thought I had dropped it in here before the meeting, but I don't see it now. You know, the interesting thing about the notice that we're going to be printing in the newspaper, putting on our social media channels. It's going to show the dollar increase in our operational budget. It's going to show the levy increase. But I think what makes sense to most people is there's a line in here that says, you know, what is a residential property with an. Actual slash assessed value of $100,000. In the current fiscal year, your property tax bill was $593. Even with this large levy increase of almost 60 cents. This notice is going to say your property tax proposed for 2024, 2025 is $531, so it's a decrease of $63. And overall, that's a decrease of 10.46%. So I think this is again, one of those issues with the law, the legislature. Because we had the large rollback change, that is. Problem is for next fiscal year, when these notices go out, whatever we do, even if the levy rate stays flat. We would expect the levy rate looking with projections from PFM. The rollback is going to go up probably 1.2% what they're projecting. So out of the gate, it's going to show actually a, a increase to the property taxpayer. Uh, when in reality, there's not going to be a revaluation year. And we don't know what the rollback is going to do. So it, it, it just. It is a problem with this law and then what the property taxpayer is going to get. It's going to add, I think, confusion to them.
That is in here. It's under, uh, it's on this page just under property tax collections. It's the paragraph below the chart on the transmittal letter.
Oh, they put it under the transmittal letter?
Yep.
Wow, okay.
On the transmittal letter, yeah, and it's the paragraph below the chart.
Oh, I, I have a, I guess I have this notice I put somewhere in there. I'm just not remembering where I put it. But thank you for pointing that out.
So, so people are gonna, they're gonna have, thank us for the property tax. Will be less this year. Even though we really had not a lot to do with that.
I know we're coming up to seven o'clock. Um, I'll pause there. The one thing we'll, we'll jump into, we'll start off on Thursday on the budget is I did not go into. I did not get through all the levy rate page, so I'll finish that. Um, because I think there's some good information on what our comparisons are of metro city only. And then consolidated, I think this actually surprised me when we put the data together. Uh, that we have the second lowest consolidated levy in the metro. And I think that's something to, that speaks volumes too. So. Um, and then the other thing we'll go through is we do kind of all of our typical charts. If you looked for them over the weekend, they weren't there, uh, but they're all the charts that you typically get through the budget process are, are there. I would note that if you want to look at them beforehand, there's a, a hyperlink you can look at at the attachment. This is a PDF version, which may be a little bit more, um, easier to read. Um, so you can look at that too.
How in-depth are we going to go into presentations from the department heads on their requests? Are we going to get into that? Uh, personally, because I'm on finance, I've heard this all. I'm just asking, are we going to start from the point of view? How, everything that ended up on, on the list is been vetted many times. Is that, is that where we're going to start?
Yep. So, so basically the same presentations that were provided to HR Finance Committee. Uh, and that same kind of length is what we propose to do. Um, so if you look at the transmittal letter for Thursday, we'll go over the fire department, the police department. Admin finance and the mayor council. Uh, then for the 23rd, we plan to go through library, community development, economic development, stormwater, parks, communications. Public works and our enterprise funds. Now, I would say, and I'm going to tee up Matt a little bit. If we really get through stuff Thursday, I'll probably have Matt jump in Thursday on some of his departments. But, because the other departments actually, there's conflicts and they won't be at Thursday, Thursday's meeting. So that's the one we'll move up.
So you're saying it's, uh, if we're looking under departments.
So yeah.
We go by that list.
If you, if you look through the departments, um, you can see their budgets in there already. But the, in the transmittal letter, we talk about what departments.
Is that the CIP transmittal letter?
No, under introduction.
Back to introduction, transmittal letter.
Yep. And towards the bottom, there's a section on city council.
Oh, I see it now. Sorry. Thank you.
Mike, one question I have is on the proposed reserve. Um, so just, I'm looking at this, the transmittal letter.
Yep.
And so it says, uh, with a general fund balance of 6.6 million or 28%. So I'll be real interested in kind of getting an understanding of why we think we have to have a 28% reserve as opposed to trying to. Because from my perspective, that's an extra 3% that can be, that could be used to, um, um, either. Reduce the proposed levy rate or, or fund something that we're not funding. So I, 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 I feel like we need to at least pursue that.
We can have some discussion.
And dig into that because, you know, I think there, um, that's, I think, that's, I just think we need to do that. So that'll be one thing I'll be interested in kind of pursuing. And I, I feel like I needed to do that because I've done that every, the previous year. And I didn't want Teresa to think now that, now that she's leaving, I all of a sudden don't care about that anymore. Sense of fairness. Okay, so that, that's a little, because that's, it says general fund here, so. So that might be helpful. I know there's a, there is.
Yeah. So if you look in there, because one of the things you'll, you'll notice and, and I sent an email this afternoon to Teresa. Are you sure it's 23.5%? So on our overall general fund.
And which one is this under?
I'm right here at this. So if you go to budget overview charts, it's the first chart. But this is your 24, 25, um, budget there. You know, we're actually, actually 23 and a half percent. Now, your overall is actually 27.7%, rounded to 28%.
Okay, that's helpful to have that information. Thank you. I always get confused when we talk about general fund and overall general fund. That's a misnomer. I, I saw that in the, I found that somewhere else in the document, so no need to do that.
Okay, if the council has any other questions for Mike prior to our meeting on Thursday night, please.
Please give me a call.
Thursday night.
Yep, it'll be Thursday night. We'll be in the sailor conference.
Don't hesitate to get them to Mike so he's prepared to answer those questions at that time.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mike. Good overview. With that, we will adjourn the work session. Move into our regular meeting.